The Lee County Board of Commissioners will come to order. I'd like to call on Mr. Hoyle to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. We'll stand, please.
May we bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day and the opportunity we have to assemble as free citizens to decide the things that should be done in our county. We ask our Father that you look upon the members of this board and bless them with clarity of thought, evenness of temper, and a willingness to persevere in service to both you and the people of this county, for we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get underway, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and make an introduction this evening. We have with us two distinguished citizens of our community, Mr. Bill Tatum, of course, the chairman of the school board, and his guest and our guest and our new school superintendent, Dr. Jeff Moss. And we would certainly like to welcome you here and invite you, Dr. Moss, to say a word to us if you would care to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, it's been an exciting few days. As you know, not many superintendents get to start a job and close school for three straight days. But the transition has been very smooth. Great citizens, great staff. Everything I've read and researched prior to making the decision to come to Lee County has proved to be true. I look forward to working with each one of you as we work together hand in hand to move our county forward, to ensure high test scores, to ensure good citizens that will stay, hopefully, or if they leave, they will come back to the county and make us very productive and become the best school system in the state of North Carolina, as well as the best county economically. So, thank you for the honor of working with you, and I look forward to all the projects that we'll be working together hand in hand with down the road.
Thank you very much for visiting with us. Thank you.
Like the interview show, Sam, sir.
If we move along, we're looking at the additional agenda. Are there any items to be added to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the board to add two items. The first is a joint resolution with the city of Sanford and the town of Broadway supporting the stimulus packages of 2009, and that resolution should be in front of you. And then also, I want to ask that we go to executive session under section 143, 318, point 11, 4, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in our area.
Okay. We will call the joint resolution item D under New Business, and just place at the end of our agenda, the executive session, if that's satisfactory. So, I'd like to motion to amend the agenda as has been presented. So moved. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's approved unanimously. I should mention to you that the presentation of the employee of the year will be delayed until another meeting, perhaps the first meeting in February. But circumstances, particularly with the weather, have precluded us having that tonight as we wish to, and I just wanted to put you on notice to that. Now, we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. You've had an opportunity, hopefully, to look over the consent agenda, and I would ask, is there a motion to approve? The motion's been approved or made. Are there any questions, anything to be discussed? If not, I would ask for a vote. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? There is no opposition, so that is approved unanimously. Tonight, there is no public comment, so we'll move directly into New Business. At this time, I'd like to open our meeting to a public hearing, and to do that, I would like to ask for a motion to move into a public hearing by the commission. It's so moved that we move into a public hearing. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move into a public meeting, and we will call on Mr. Payne to make a presentation relative to the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Payne.
The city of Sanford is seeking to apply for a Part F, Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant to purchase the depot building. And in order to do that and to score more points on that application, we are looking to amend our Parks and Open Space Plan to include the depot park in our program and In speaking with David Montgomery, who's pretty much in charge of the depot park, the space can be used for a number of different places, number of different meetings, classes. It could be dance classes, it could be art classes, music classes, in addition to reception areas. That's a pretty big building that could be divided into two halves with some renovation in there. And from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, what we're looking at doing is just doing some programming in there. And any programs that we run in that facility would be self-sufficient. In other words, we'd have certain minimums and registration fees that would cover the cost of us conducting those programs in there. Are there any questions?
Okay. I think we, in a public session, would ask, therefore, are there any attendants here this evening who would speak in favor of this proposal? And so, please identify themselves and come forward.
Excuse me. David Montgomery, 119 North Gulf Street, Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk to you. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Downtown Sanford and as a staff member for the city of Sanford, encourage your support of this amendment to the Parks and Open Space Plan. As John indicated, this does help in a points criteria for Part F funds, which is the Park and Recreation Trust Fund. The city is going to apply to the Parks and Recreation Division of the state for these funds, in the hopes of subsidizing some of the costs associated with the acquisition and renovation of that depot, so that it can be used by the public for recreational purposes. It's a 50 percent match, and any points, if any of you have had any experience with grant writing and grant rating, any points that you can attain, you try to get them. But I would also like to point out that this is an opportunity to reflect Depot Park in the comprehensive county plan. As many of you know, we do summer concerts at Depot Park, which has been extremely successful. I think the facility speaks for itself. It's been rented out for weddings and that sort of thing by the city, hopefully owning and making this more available to the public. We just think it would enhance the park. So, again, encourage your support for this amendment, and if you have any questions, feel free to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you very much. We'll reserve questions for just a little bit later, if there should be some.
Okay.
At this time, let me ask if there's anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? If not, is there anyone who would speak against it? There is no indication of anyone speaking against it, so with that, I will call this public hearing to a close. Now, I'd like to ask for a motion by the board to approve this, and then if you have questions, of course, we will ask these gentlemen to share with us, to answer any questions you may have. Is there a motion to conduct advertised public hearing and approve the amended Comprehensive Park and Open Space Plan as presented?
Moved to approve.
It is moved to approve. All in favor of the motion, the amended motion as indicated, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? There is no opposition. The motion is approved. Thank you very much. The next item is a request for proposals for Community Development Block Grant Program. Karen Kennedy, your presentation, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have in your package a recommendation for proposal for services for the administration of the 2008 Scattered Site Housing Community Development Block Grant Program. Of the eight mailings we submitted to firms across the state, we received two. That would be from the Wooten Company in Raleigh and Holland Consulting Planners in Wilmington. And in following staff analysis, calling of references, and information that we received, staff would like to recommend that we select the Wooten Company, continue with our Community Development Block Grant administrative services.
I have one.
Okay.
When I looked at this, it occurred to me that the reasons that you would propose that we approve the high bid rather than the low would be based on substantial evidence of the relationship which has been developed and the good work that the Wooten Company has done. You're not concerned, I presume, that this would set some precedent that we would not, in fact, always go with the low bid? Would you care to elaborate on that at all?
I love the instance, she referred to it was the other, the low bidder. We had a man that had to be, or lady had to be relocated, and that company supervised it, and they located the house and paid the rent for a year. The woman stayed there four months, she moved out, and nobody knew it. And when they all went through the program, they said the county had to pay the lady the one year's rent because they couldn't pay the whole year's rent in advance without her written permission. The state sent us a letter saying, "We owe it." We sent a letter to the county and said, "You made a mistake." Mr. Cowan and I held firm to that for three years, because I saw it at all expense. It's a lot of freedom, because the Wooten Company, the last project they handled was a student loan, and they paid it.
I think, getting onto whether this sets a bad precedent or not, I think 99 percent of the time, staff recommends low bid for the county. This particular issue is a service. There is exemption in the statute that allows us to not just consider price in awarding this contract. So, knowing the problems that we've had with these grants in the past, and then the success that we've had recently, and a lot of the folks that have applied are carryforward from the last project who didn't get funded in the last project. So, we think, you know, we have a good track record, and just would like to, you know, stick with that for this time. And don't think that we're setting a bad precedent. I think in this type of service, I think quality of work stands for something, and, you know, that's why they give you that exemption in the statute.
This isn't really taxpayer funds. This is coming from the proceeds of the grant, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's state tax money.
Yeah, well, it doesn't come out of our general fund. It's coming from the proceeds of the grant at the state level, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Karen, do you have that option in your toolbox for vendors you work with, say contractors that you work with on these different sites, that you know, you know, they fall within a thousand dollars of each other, and you know one's better than the other? Do you have that option?
Within the Community Development Block Grant regulations, it's lowest responsible bidder, and that is qualified by, you know, reference checking in addition. And there have been times through our grant program where we have not selected the lowest bid from a contractor because of past experience with them. And we have sought the second bid, you know, second to the lowest, and examples like that. That's why we ask for references, and also why there's a circle of people like me across the state that you can pick up the phone and call and say you worked with this firm or this contractor.
I think that's very satisfactory from my own point of view, but I did feel that it would be worthwhile to, and I appreciate Mr. Hoyle's comments and Mr. Crumpton's, that this better explains how this type of decision can come about. And it may be the obvious, but I felt it would be good for those present and viewing this to understand the process that would go through. So, I thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, you went from 51, 134, and Hollins is 48, now?
Yes, sir.
I wonder what a chance of being negotiating theirs down to what Hollins' bid was, 48, now?
I can ask. I negotiated with them and got them down to the 51, 134. I'll be glad to ask them again. They had, when they first submitted that first price, and then I commented to them that I thought their bid was a little high with the ability to negotiate, and one of their staff reminded them that they would be administering your '09 urgent repair project. So, there would be some cost savings because they'd already be working here. So, they renegotiated to the 51, 134. I'll be glad to ask them tomorrow. Don't know what else.
If you've got a good working relationship, I don't see why they wouldn't consider that.
Never hurts to ask.
That's right.
Yeah, never hurts to ask.
Only thing that happens, they'll say either yes or no.
That's right. Motion to move forward, would you like to, I'm sorry, would you like to?
I'd like to motion with the understanding she's going to ask for the negotiated price to go ahead and approve this. Can I do it that way?
And if they say no?
And if they say no, we'll still approve it, I guess. Just hope they don't watch this. They're not listening on it.
You're being recorded.
It's streaming live right now.
According to Hoyle's law.
Whatever you want.
I think that sounds reasonable, and I think there's a good spirit to it, and that we are trying to save money, and if you can get it down, that's great, and we would appreciate that very much. So, there's a motion on the floor, and all in favor, are there any questions, any other questions that you'd like to bring out before the vote? If not, all in favor of the motion as stated by our vice chair, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? There is no opposition. Thank you very much. The next item, Mr. Crumpton is going to talk to us about the 9/11 contract between the county of Lee and the city of Sanford. Mr. Crumpton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We've been working with the city of Sanford since March of last year, trying to get a contract in place for the city to operate the county's primary public answering point. Recently, we had a conference call with the 911 board. They reiterated that we needed to go ahead and put a contract in place, so this is our effort to move this issue forward. The 911 board continues to hold, it's roughly about $370,000 of funds that should be coming to the county for 911 purposes, and they've held those since, you know, March of last year, when the rules changed and they discovered that the county did not operate the PSAP. So, the state treasurer recognizes the county as the recipient of the 911 funds and the responsible party for PSAP operations. So, they said we could contract with the city to meet those obligations, and this contract is what we have before you today.
Is there a motion that we approve the contract as indicated in our agenda packet? That is, to move to approve the contract and forward to the city of Sanford for their consideration and hopefully their approval? Is there a motion for that?
Before you get a motion, is this the same contract we've used in the past, or is it different?
We've never had a contract with the city on this.
Agreement.
Yes, sir. This is basically the written form of the handshake agreement that we've had.
And this allows the city to continue operating?
Yes, it does. It says that the city will continue to operate the primary PSAP, and we'll continue to distribute funds to them as we have done in the past.
So, there's no change whatsoever. It's just that we finally, as I understand it, put this in black and white and have a signed contract between the two bodies.
Yes, sir. I think this is a minimal, I asked Mr. Hoyle, this is a minimal contract that will get the funds flowing, and it really just reiterates what we're currently doing. The difference is here is we have, you know, options for the city or the county to terminate the contract, and then there is an end date. You know, a contract needs to have both those provisions to be legally binding on both parties. You know, our board cannot do a perpetuity contract. We have to have an ending date so that we don't bind future boards to this decision.
What I understand now is we're just willing to present this to the city to sign. Is that right?
We would be approving it and then presenting it to them for their approval.
We put a timeframe in there because this has gone on and on and on, and, you know, I think we're going to need to move forward in one direction or the other. So, do we want to put a reasonable timeframe on there?
A pleasure of the board.
Well, they're either going to sign it or not.
We've been, I mean, we've been in discussions for almost a year now, you know.
What discussions?
Well, exactly.
The staff has been in discussions and, you know, disseminating information to eat, I'm assuming that he's been disseminating information to his board, but, you know, I did not ask. But I think if you wanted to put 60 days or, you know, on that, that you'd like to have a response or?
I would say 30 days. And I guess, you know, I appreciate you putting the history in here, because that was helpful to me, and I've been on the board, and I'm sure it was helpful for the new members of the board. But I guess I got a little, you know, frustrated, or it was puzzling to me why, when the ruling came down, why they tried to intervene and have the 911 board rewrite the laws or reinterpret it, not only once, but twice. I don't understand that. So, and I will say that there are some concerns from the volunteer fire districts also about some of the ways that the 911 calls get dispatched, because it affects their ratings. So, I think that, you know, we need to put a time deadline on this. I'm comfortable with 30 days or sooner, but I think we need to be thinking how to move forward if they're going to not sign on ink what we've been doing. Now, it's my understanding that in the past, there were no restrictions on how these funds could be used, but that's also part of this change, right?
There have always been some restrictions on the funds, and regulated by the 911.
That's wrong. You know what? We never even knew we could use the funds. Several years ago, I asked the board to have the attorney general give an opinion on whether we could use 911 funds or not. That's when they first started getting loosened up. So, for you to think that it's always been a free for all, it hasn't been. What I'm trying to find out here tonight is what exactly are we, we want a contract signed for the purposes of starting to receive the funding, is that correct?
Yeah, return the funding back to us.
Okay, let's get it straight. We're trying to resolve a matter about who's going to do what. We're going to contain a lot of money staying in Raleigh, or wherever they're keeping it. So, let's first get one thing off the table, and that ought to be to get the money back into the county.
That's true, and I think if I understand things right, it's our statutory duty that we're responsible for handling the 911 calls. And so, you know, if we don't have that contract, which is part of the state requirements, you know, how liable are we on something? So, I think it's pretty cut and dry, and I think to mitigate the county's liability, I just want to get this taken care of.
I don't think we have any more liability than we've had all along. Here's what the 911 board seems to be saying, and what I've read. They seem to say, "You all get it together, or we'll keep the funds until you do get it together." So, let's not give a threatening approach to this. Let's first talk about how each government can accept the fact that we owe it to the citizens to first get our money coming back, and then we'll start talking about what we do from there. And if it takes a contract or this interlocal agreement, then let's talk about getting that done first.
We've been working on a handshake deal for how many years? Is it worth, I mean, we've got a lot more handshake agreements with the city right now that, you know, yeah, the 911 board ruled in our favor in how the money is dispersed, but there's quite a few other agreements out there that, you know, the city could probably turn around and discurse to us.
The...
You know, let's not burn our bridge here.
The 911 board director instructed us in conversation with the city, and I was there as a part of that meeting.
Was there elected person or meeting you were in?
Well, the city. The city.
In the conference?
It was a conference call, and the city had, yeah, who was?
They had four representatives. They had the city manager, the city attorney, the...
Elected.
Well, they didn't have any elected.
All right. That's a good point, and our attendance was sort of by coincidence. This had been planned, and these administrators were going to talk about it. But what I wanted to say is, it was my clear understanding that the money is being held, and the director said, like Mr. Reeve says, "You folks get together down there, but the law states that the money has to flow to the county, period." Now, you need a business contract, like all good agreeable citizens, that will clarify any questions. The city has their function to undertake, but you are the catchment, you are the receiver of the funds, and then you distribute them appropriately according to contract of the city. And that's as far as they went, and they simply said, "Get it together." You know, make something happen and move beyond this impasse if you want these state funds to come your way. And I couldn't agree more. We've simply got to do that, and if there are other reasons, they may come out later. But I too think that we need to keep this simple, and we need to be of goodwill to our city colleagues, and to get this contract signed, and the sooner the better, because meanwhile, we're not, we do not have advantage of that money, and it's growing, and that's not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We have a contract here, and I'll tell you what I think, just listen to this. We need to put a date on that. Put 15 days. Put 15 days. Then if they don't want to sign it, then let's get with them and let them help write the contract, or, or give us some ideas on the contract that they will sign.
What makes you think they won't sign it?
I don't know. That seems a big question, though.
I think there, I think there are some issues the city has. You know, most of it has to do with control. They want more control in this matter. In this issue, there are two issues. The first issue is the 911 system itself, and who, and how you get those phone calls answered. The 911 Board said, "It's the county's responsibility that when someone in this county dials 911, somebody on the other end picks it up." This contract covers that. This ensures that the city will, will act on our behalf and pick up those phone calls. The issue the city is most concerned with is, once that phone call is received in the PSAP, how is it, how are those calls dispatched? Who handles the dispatching? The city wants to maintain control of that dispatching. This contract leaves that control with them. So, you know, their biggest concerns are, they want to guarantee that control for a long period of time, and I'm not sure that you can, you can do that. I don't know, this is a four-year agreement?
This is an end date of 2012.
Right, four-year agreement, and, you know, you can extend it another year or so, but typically, I, I don't think you would want to have an agreement out five, further than five years. And if, and if folks wanted to come back later and discuss different communications or different dispatching, you know, this leaves it open to do that. So, you know, I think there were things that the city, and, and the reason I went ahead and put this forward were there's things the city wanted us to agree to, that I told them that we could not by law. So at this point, I felt like we needed to put the ball in their court.
How long ago did you ask them to draft a contract and get it to us?
Back in December. I sent them the last draft that we had worked on back during the summer and said, you know, "Here's our last draft, where are we now?" And they told me they didn't like it, and I said, "Well, you go ahead and draft a new contract and send it to me." And I did not get one.
We need a motion. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. That we, we send them this contract with a 30-day no signing date on it.
Response.
Response.
For a signed contract?
Right.
Okay. Are there any further pieces of discussion that need to take place? The motion is on the floor, that we send them this contract, and within 30 days, we will ask that they sign the contract and return it to us, is that?
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days.
Well, yeah, so what do you do after the 30 days if they don't sign?
Talk about the contract again, I think.
Who are you gonna talk to with? You already gave them 30 days, and if they don't sign?
Come up with a different plan.
Well, the, the plan, maybe the plan should have been all along to at least send this, have we sent this over to them yet?
Yes, sir.
And, and when did they get it?
Two weeks ago.
And have they had it on their agenda?
To my knowledge, they have not pushed it forward to their board.
So this has never been discussed by their council members?
Not directly, not formally.
I'm not sure what they have, had done exactly on their end. I'm worried about what's going here.
We gotta start somewhere.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
You ought to start with the elected board, then.
They'll probably get involved before it's over.
Probability is out if you're sending the contract to them, they, they are involved. I'm just saying, now that they, if they've got it for two weeks, we should have at least asked if they would have already addressed it, or if they were going to address it at the next meeting. You know, and I don't have a dog in the fight, other than I pay both taxes, okay? And the way I look at it, and what I'm hearing here, is that you could wind up with another 30 days of not having any money coming from this county, and this board right here is paying the tab right now, as I understand what I read. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We've been...
So it would behoove us to try and work something out in a more, yes, in a more reasonable manner than these threatening 30, 60, whatever days. And that, that board is electable like we are.
I don't think it's threatened, because the manager says it's been a year, we've weighed a year.
You have an opinion and I have one.
Right, that's right, but I, I don't think it's threatened.
And I, I respect that.
Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor, and I thank you very much for your input into this. We need to vote. All in favor of the motion as stated, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
One no. The motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is the joint resolution, which is item G. And I believe, Mr. Crump, are you gonna?
I think Mr. Bridwell sent me the resolution, so if he would like to say anything on, on behalf of the city, he may, but obviously, there's been a lot of discussion between the city, the county, and the town of Broadway on how best to get prepared when the stimulus money is, is approved. I did talk to Representative Love today at the superintendent's swearing-in about this very issue. He believes that, you know, some of that money will actually end up coming through the state, so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get on board with the city and the town, support each other's projects. I went ahead and listed the eight projects that we were gonna submit in the stimulus package. I have not sent this letter yet, so if anybody has any comments, they can go ahead and do it, but those eight are in there. And then I added the cities, so you can see what they're, what they're asking for. And obviously, they've got a couple really big projects in the, in the water and wastewater arena, so, you know, our big projects, our biggest project is actually the renovation of Lee Senior High School, but the first two projects, the Lee, the Sandley Park Dam Restoration, actually, from what we've been reading, this one fits their bill to a T. It's green space for our park, and it would, you know, from a dollar standpoint, too, it's probably not as expensive as some, so we'd say there's a good chance there, but do you want to add anything?
I, I think you've stated very well, Mr. Crump, and Mr. Chairman, the, this was at a request of the city councilman, that we all, we all joined together in supporting each other's projects, and that's where the idea of the joint resolution came from. We also solicited projects from the town of Broadway, they had two, one of which was work on their main street for sidewalks, and also their backup power system for their treatment plant. So they have two projects in this wood.
I, just a comment, I, I think this is the first time that we've had an opportunity to look at exactly what would be in our stimulus pa, plan, what we would be seeking. And so I think it's something that is interesting and rather exciting to think that we might possibly receive these types of funds after we have done our due diligence, but this is the beginning of the process. And these are the, these are the projects, and you're seeking these joint approvals. Let me ask you, do you say here, I may not have seen it, what is the total of the package? How much?
I believe the city's total was $150 million.
Okay. And the county?
I pulled out my calculator of...
I can answer that because it was added up in the same day we were in the other day.
Okay.
Forty-four.
Pardon me?
What did?
$150 million on the city's package.
Forty-four, sixty-four. Sixty-six. Ours is 66 million.
Okay.
Say no.
And our projects, except for the extension of water and sewer lines out into the, I mean, the water lines out into the county, all came from our CIP.
Okay.
So I didn't recreate anything, you know, these are the projects that we have looked at in the past and as a board, and...
So we're talking about?
Right out of the capital improvement plan.
$216 million.
Plus, plus Broadway's, which...
Plus Broadway.
Which would not be a great deal more, would it be?
You could fairly say 220 million.
Well, this is, this is exciting, it's interesting. I think the public is going to be interested in seeing what we're putting forward here, and, and we're all holding our breath and hoping that just a, a few of these, if not all.
We'll do a lot more when they start actually setting down guidelines, but these are all products I believe that everybody could feel comfortable with and, and putting forth.
Okay, I'm sorry, please.
I just had a couple of quick questions. Did we rank these when they were put forward, or they just come as a package?
I think one of the things we'll probably end up doing, and I want Mr. Crump to answer as well, is once we find out the funding criteria, is, we don't think that there's gonna be one pot of money.
Right.
There's probably gonna be more than one pot, and when we find out what those pots are, then we should probably rank them according to how they've, how we think they fit the categories that's also set up.
And ours, ours follows the, the ranking that we did in the CIP as far as, you know, when we were gonna fund them in years, and we just went across those years and, and gave them, and plugged them that way, so...
I think the city's, if you, if you had to say one project, but probably the waste treatment plant would be the number one.
Okay. And the, and the second question, I know, I think maybe I've heard you make this statement before, that the, the projects, of course, that had the best chance for being awarded were the ones that were shovel-ready.
Yes, that's correct. That's the statement.
How many of the, I mean, no...
I, I think, I think all of them are pretty much shovel-ready.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, for us, you know, obviously, we have some that have to have some architectural design done first, but the one that's, that's almost ready is Sandley Dam, Dam Restoration. I mean, we, we should be ready for hopefully bidding in, in 60 days, so...
How about the high school? Where does it stand as far as being shovel-ready?
They, they have a conceptual plan, but they would still have to have their architectural drawings done and then approved by the Department of Public Construction, and that's, that's gonna be an interesting deal here, because, you know, normally, that could be a 10-month process, but if the funds go through the state, you know, they're gonna have to knock down some of those hurdles for us to, to move forward. So not just us, but, you know, they, they, they have specifically said school construction would be a piece, and I don't know how you can do a school construction without, without getting Department of Public Construction approval first.
It's interesting that right now, probably, the architectural firms and engineering firms are probably really, really slow, but they're all saying...
They're licking their chops.
Yeah. They're very excited.
They're very excited.
Before, I, I want to mention again, if you look at all the school systems in Lee County, you've probably got two or three million dollars worth of resurfacing that needs done now, that needs to be done now. I just wonder how that would fit in with this money there.
DOT has actually submitted their own list, and I, we, I, we passed that around to a number of folks last week, but their, their products locally for, that we've, that we've seen are, are bypasses, obviously, number one.
You meant their parking lots?
Yeah, I meant the parking lots. You know, all their parking lots, they got, we had to reach, this county had to reach in to get the money to do it tomorrow, and I noticed driving through, they're potholing out, a lot of them.
That's not, I think the, the school system has concentrated on buildings.
We're those settle hounds building, that parking lot's coming over, pieces potholing out.
Just wondering how we can get those. If we can get those, can we get some of that money?
Write that down, Mr. Crump.
I am, I am.
But, Mr. Bob, you're, you're...
Showed it right now.
Mr. Chairman, it is pretty exciting, all this is to add. We'd be very, very busy trying to put all these products together.
Yeah, and just one, one other question. The process, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you anticipate, well, timing? Is it your sense that in the next 60 days, that the first response might be coming back if the president has his...
I, I would suspect that, what we've seen lately is that there should be a package ready for Congress to look at in February.
Okay.
That we would probably see something very shortly thereafter. I would suspect the spring is gonna be extremely busy.
Okay.
Trying to figure out how to make all this work.
And, and that response would, we, we're led to believe it would come back through established agencies, those funds would find their way back. There are not gonna be any direct shots to the counties, not likely.
Well, the larger cities are trying to get the state out of the middle of the picture, but I suspect that we're gonna have the states, some state involved in some way. That's what we expect anyway.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the joint resolution of the City of Sanford, County of Lee, and the town of Broadway relative to the proposed stimulus package of 2009. Is there any further discussion?
I, I'm gonna be the wet blanket here, just because, first of all, on principle, I think a lot of the economic crisis we have now has been brought on by members of both parties who have been in controlling Congress. I firmly believe that governments cannot change the law of economics, governments do not create jobs. So this whole idea that spending all this extra government money is going to create jobs and change the laws of economics, I don't buy into. So I, I think that the true infrastructure projects are good, and I can support those, but not knowing much about, you know, some of these other projects, I just, you know, and the wording of this is what I'm uncomfortable with. That's just me, I'll be the only dissenter, I'm sure.
Well, thank you, that's, that's appreciated.
What wording are you bothered with? I mean, the resolution or something else?
The, primarily the second whereas clause for projects that can stimulate the economy, create jobs, you know. History has shown time and time again that, you know, government does not create jobs, and the government cannot change the laws of economics, so I'm uncomfortable with that wording.
You're saying that Franklin Delano Roosevelt didn't change things with his administration?
We're, we're paying for good old social security today. That's another whole, that's another... Don't get me started.
You can't even remember that way.
Order, order.
Listen, is there any chance, I have not seen already anywhere the stimulus package, is any of this, any chance it may be match-related, or do you know, anybody know?
They have not said, but they have said that, you know, some of this money might be no-interest loans, is what we heard last week, so there could be some of that money that would funnel through where you would have to pay it back, and you don't know the payment terms or, or anything like that, so, you know, for the city who's gonna do a $70 million wastewater project, if they could get, you know, they're gonna do it. If they could get no-interest money, it would be, it'd be a huge deal for them, but...
That's not an enterprise project?
It is, it is, but they feel like they can, they can still qualify for that no-interest.
But, but unlikely that it would be upfront. I mean, you'd have to pay it back perhaps for that interest, but I mean, the whole sense of the stimulus is to get people off their bottom.
Get them to work.
Get them to work and get this going so that we could take advantage of it. I would only respond to Mrs. Shook in this way, that I think it's, your points are well made. I think there are a lot of minds, a lot of people in Washington who are going to be really looking this over, carefully scouring it, but I think the preponderance of, of support will be there. I think that, and, and I, I wish, it seems to me like that we certainly need something to move us forward, and I suppose the, this is, at the grassroots in Lee County and other counties across the nation, this is where it begins, and I don't think that discussion's over yet, but this is where we say, if this is to be, we certainly have a stake in this, in this program, and we want to be accounted for. And I congratulate our administrative colleagues for putting this together and, and being heads up about it, and I'm sure there's gonna be an opportunity to look at what comes down our way and to then debate it, and to see if the cost is bearable, or if it's too high for us, but my sense is, we, we need all the help we can get. At any rate, the, the question's been called, and I'd like to ask for a vote on this so that we can move on. All in favor of the resolution as stated, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Two no's and five approvals.
I should know once you got the votes. Who wasn't a gentleman?
I know you're looking out for those badges.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will move to the manager's report. Mr. Crump?
Yes, Ms. Mentor's gonna start with the financial report.
You have the report through December 2000...
You have the report through December two thousand eight in front of you. As you will see, our tax collections in the month of December were much higher, have brought us to a much higher number than the same time period last year. I will say, and Mr. Brunson's here to confirm this, I do think some of that's come from a change in them making sure that the checks that were received in the mail were transacted in a more prompt manner this year than in past years. So, you know, as Mr. Crumpton and I discussed earlier this week, you know, our budget and our tax base is what it is, and just because we're ahead at this point doesn't mean we're going to have more money than what we anticipated and what we've been telling you. It just means we've got more processed and maybe people paid a little bit earlier. We'll have a little better sense after we get through January as to really, was it a, just a quirk or, you know, what's going on there. The revenues are still falling short. We're still running behind in permits and fees. Registered deeds didn't notify us that they had received a significant excise tax payment in the first part of January, but we are still falling well behind in the registered deeds permits and fees. Sales and services, we're still only at forty-one point nine percent. Investment earnings are still falling behind, and that's due to partial downfall in rates along with a lower cash balance. We are trying to keep our money as invested as possible and trying to get the best interest rates we can to keep that up. Miss Layus revenue does appear to be ahead of the game, but with some things that are coming in, some grant monies that are coming in that we're having to turn around and pay right back out to other agencies are compensating for that. Sales tax numbers, you have the sales tax report for the most recent distribution. As you can see, the numbers are still significantly down from previous years for the same time period. If you look at the historical analysis of sales tax received, you will see I have added a new section there called the City Hold Harmless. This is the first month of the change in collections that have, we've seen the result of the change in the sales tax laws related to the Medicaid tax relief. And what happened there, as most of you know, we lost half of the Article forty-four sales tax. Cities and towns also lost that, and therefore, they are being held harmless, and that money comes out of our pot of money, and inevitably comes out of our Article thirty-nine. The reports that we got from the state allow us to see that amount, so I opted to put it on here so that you could see what is going on. These changes are going to make it very difficult for us to really know what has happened to sales tax, so then we can honestly tell you it's down. But the true impact is going to be very hard to discern between the downfall of the economy and the change in the sales tax laws. We will have to pretty much monitor Article forty and forty-two to see really what's happening. But at this point in time, you can see through the same period last year, we were down eight, almost nine percent, twenty-eight and nine percent on Article thirty-nine. Articles forty and forty-two are down at almost three percent. Article forty-four is down eighteen percent, but that is due to the shift, and overall, we're down about eight percent, so. As far as expenditures go, we have fifty percent is our target. Most of our departments are under that. We still have a few that are running over, and the major one that we know was probably not requiring a budget amendment towards the end of the year would be in the juvenile detention arena, where we have limited control over who is in detention and how long they are there for. So, we will probably be coming back towards the end of the year and asking for leniency in that line item.
Okay, are there any questions?
I, I have a question on page fifty-one. It was because I hadn't had enough coffee when I was looking at this, but I'm not quite sure how to read or interpret that, so I need to have it explained.
I'll be honest with you, that's Mr. Brunson's sheet, so I don't know why he'll explain that to you.
Each year, of course, you know, we have a revenue budget. And what I did is I took fiscal year two thousand eight revenue budget and compared it to this year's revenue budget, see how we're progressing along. And mainly, we have ten years of taxes in each revenue budget. So, last year, we went back to nineteen ninety-seven tax year. This year, we want to go back to nineteen ninety-eight tax year, because that's ten years away. For each tax year, we have a budgeted amount, we have an actual-to-date amount, and we have the difference between those two columns. And also, the last column is the percentage of budget. And you can see in pretty much every line item, or every tax year for fiscal year two thousand nine four exceeds what we experienced in fiscal year two thousand and eight.
I guess where I got confused is I was looking at nineteen ninety-seven. We budgeted five hundred, or is that supposed to be an, an actual? So, that's why I was confused at the low amounts there just ten years ago.
That's how much we budget in the current fiscal year for collecting taxes from ten years ago.
So, since.
So, we're still going back ten years trying to collect that money.
Okay.
So, last year, we said that for nineteen ninety-seven taxes, we could buy them out.
Okay. And I, I think something else that would help me, I'm very graphic-oriented, if, if we could have the revenue sources broken out, like, you know, real estate, sales tax, or is that possible? Are we just talking about?
We're just talking about.
This is strictly just tax revenue here.
Property tax revenue, okay.
Vehicles, personal property, and real estate would be your three categories.
That would even help.
We can break that out.
Any other questions?
I'd just make a quick comment on the, the sales tax distribution from October. And we had several of the other county managers at the Legislative Goals Conference last week in Raleigh, and I spent quite a bit of time talking to them, and that was the first question everyone asked me, is, did you see the sales tax report? And I said, yes, and I said ours was pretty bad, and I heard some other numbers. And I guess the highlight is, is ours weren't too bad compared to the others. And I think if you really get into it, and when you look at Article forty-four and what we had to give up, and then pulling the, pulling the city harmless through Article thirty-nine, you know, we, we figured we were down four to five percent so far year-to-date. And when we gave you the revised numbers, that's what we were using. So, we felt like, at least in October, we were on target with where we told you we would be short, so. Hopefully, we won't fall any further in the hole. Although the numbers we heard, you know, they were already starting to estimate November and December numbers, and we're, and we're hearing that, you know, they were pretty bad across the state as well, so.
They say December was one of the worst months they've ever seen.
It was, it was the worst December in a long time. I don't remember many years, but they, the Wake County manager, I don't know how he gets to see his numbers, but somehow, he knows, you know, in advance of the distributions what his numbers are. We can never get, we can never find that out, and he told me that theirs was the worst since he'd been manager, so.
And on the other hand, you know, online retailers had really good years, so I, I'm kind of glad to see the state maybe pursuing trying to collect the sales taxes on internet sales. I've heard people here, you know, our own merchants say that, you know, they're losing sales because they have to charge sales tax, and somebody can order it online and not pay that, and that makes a difference whether they buy local or not, so. I think that is something I'd like to see as the state pursue.
So, well, thank you. I think I hear us saying that we're sort of steady at the moment. The marks are be, as you've anticipated, it's about, you've read it pretty well up to this point, and that you would expect it to continue to stay about where it is, about.
Where we, we think we're all right on our reestimates.
Okay.
For now, until we see something that's different. And I think, you know, we may end up a little bit higher in the, in the tax collections, because the prior year's collection that the department is doing is, is way ahead. So, they may be able to make up some of that shortfall in this year's with prior year's taxes.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, the other issues that I have are retreat dates. Kind of talking around a retreat, and we'd like to throw out the first week of March. I think it's March fourth is a Wednesday, March fifth is a Thursday, and see if anybody has those days available to go retreat.
Okay, would this be, like, on the fourth, an evening type of reception and program? And then we'd have a full day, on the second day, that would be full during the day? Have you thought, sort of fleshed this out yet?
Well, I think it's up to the board what they're, what they feel they can do, but.
So, this is the first pass on the dates, and you'd like for us to get back with you and let you know if it fits or not?
Yes, sir.
Is that, okay, at this point? Then you'll come back with more details?
Right.
Okay.
You know, let the board, you know, get some feedback from board members on what they'd like to see done. You know, like we saw on Wednesday, we saw a very effective deal done on Wednesday where Vaughn Upshaw, who I think has, has helped the county with retreats in the past, where she got all the chairman and vice chairman and staff members who went to the new chairman's school on Wednesday and got them to talk about what their expectations were for themselves, and what their expectations of others and expectation of staff. And I, it was very informative, I thought, and thought it'd be a great thing for us to do, because the staff, that's what we're looking for, is, you know, what are the expectations from the board, and what, you know, what really the commissioners want to achieve, you know, while they're serving, so. I thought it was a great session, and I'd love to see something similar for us to get things started, so. That's just my idea, you know, I've got to hear from y'all and see what y'all want to do.
We want to give you input, and I think that you're, I hear you saying that as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
This week, within the next week, you'd like to hear back from those of us who would wish to make suggestions, and also, if these dates are fit, generally speaking.
Yes, sir.
And then you'll flesh that out and bring it back to us, and we'll see what we have for a full discussion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any, any comments, any about that process? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Crumpton?
Just, you know, we discussed the last meeting unfreezing the deputy county attorney's position, and we're back to receiving applications and resumes and, you know, get a feeling from the board of how you would like for us to proceed, and then how the board would like to be involved in, in that process, so. Open to any discussion that you'd like for us to have or do on that?
First thing I'd like to, and I guess I can get this online, is I'd like to take a look at the posting that we posted to see what the requirements are and whatever. So, that's online, I can.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the board needs to do like we've done with other positions and want committee to search many, to handle the applications and handle the grading and testing of, of this person and make a recommendation to the board.
Is that something that you expect to do, Mr. Crumpton?
Well, I think it'd be a good thing. If, if the board would like to have the committee, it normally works well. I think Mr. Hoel needs to be involved in, in that process as well, and.
Ms. McGee.
And Ms. McGee. I think they've, they've proven that they can do it, and she proved that she can do it, so. Not that she, you know, helped in hiring me, but, you know.
It's the only comment I, I have, and I was on one of the committees that did that, but I, I really do think that all commissioners need to be able to see all the applicants, and that there's one that somebody just really wants to, you know, have included in the interviews or in the process, that they have the ability to be able to do that if they're not on the committee.
I, I, I trust that we have a consensus, therefore, you've gotten input right here that perhaps at the next meeting, you would be able to come, but is that reasonable?
If that, if that's what you'd like for us to do.
Yeah, I think Mr. Kelly has, is suggesting that we define that process, that we have input into it, full input, and, and be totally involved in this process along with Mr. Hoel, of course, and, and others. And I think if you will take the spirit of that and put it together as a recommendation to us, I think it would be appreciated. And if you have any questions, I'm sure that Mr. Kelly and others would be happy to elaborate, as would I, as to how that can come together, but we, we want to get our teeth into it, and this is an important position, and, and there are a lot of people, I, I believe, that could make use of this, so we want to move it along in a fine fashion.
Okay. That's it for my report.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to comments from the commissioners. Mr. Pascal? Ms. Shook?
I just wanted to give a brief update. I attended my first mental health board meeting last week, and as I share with some of you, it's the first time I ever went to a meeting where I didn't say anything because it was such a learning curve, you know? Acronyms I didn't understand, but it was a, it's a huge board, you know, with eight counties, and, you know, everybody having at least two, sometimes more members. But just did want to fill you in on a couple of things. You know, Sandhill's going to have some challenges. They lost a million dollars in the state cuts, so, you know, they're having to reevaluate that. They're in the process of becoming nationally accredited, so their goal is to do that by December of this year, and I'm not sure whether that's their own goal or whether that's something that the state requires. The state is requiring all the local management entities to do the Medicaid billing. So, what that means is you cannot be a provider of services and then bill for services. So, right now, they're just having to do a lot of restructuring, you know, as to what is management part, what are the services they provide. So, I think we're going to see a lot of changes coming down the, the pipe. One of the things they are providing is crisis intervention training, and this is something that will be coming to Lee County, and they work with the, they work with the sheriff's department, and the purpose is to create safer communities by, you know, training the law enforcement officers how to deal with certain situations. And so, one of my goals in all of this, first of all, is to learn all these acronyms and whatever, but Lee County pays more per capita for our fees that we pay in there than, and I don't know yet what the other side of that is, what the services are. So, that's one of my goals, is to get a handle on that. I know there's some counties that are big users of psychiatric services, and they don't pay as much as we do, so that's one of my goals, is to get a handle on that. And I am going to be having lunch with Michael Watson in the next couple of weeks. He's going to kind of bring me up to speed real quick, take me through the facility here. And I will say that I was impressed with him. I was impressed with that board. I think it's a very intelligent board, people from different backgrounds, and maybe that's why I didn't say anything, I was a little intimidated with all their knowledge and me just sitting there, but in any event, I look forward to serving on that board. Social Services Board got canceled for the month of January, so I don't have anything to report there.
Mr. Rives?
Just live while you can.
Mr. Reeves?
I'm usually leaving meetings instead of coming at six, but I'm glad to be here, and that's it.
Well, let me just conclude that by sort of responding in a way to, to all of you. I had the opportunity, the privilege and pleasure to go to the North Carolina Association for County Commissioners, their adoption program for legislative matters, and each one of you will be receiving this information if you don't already have it. But these are the priority goals that were approved, and Ms. Dowrump was there as well. And it was a very informative, instructive, educational process for me to really see these fine county commissioners there talking about changes that need to be made, and the discussion and the debate that went on was something that I was very pleased to have a part in. And I, I wanted to, the, the goals were, just very briefly, there was a priority goal that was approved, and then the other areas were justice and public safety in which proposals were, were proposed and approved. Taxation and finance, agriculture, public education, intergovernmental relations, the environment and human services. And all of your, your material that you'll read, I think, is very, very well put and approved by the entire. and approved by the entire group that was there, some three hundred commissioners from across the state. The priority goal, which was sort of acclaimed and voted for by everyone enthusiastically, I think essentially said that the counties yet again are saying, "Allow us to be, allow us to survive. Do not send forward unfunded mandates. We demand that we be heard, that we be treated fairly, and that we're doing all that we can do. And please be sympathetic and empathetic to, to our position." And that's, and the priority goal simply says this, "Revenue options and protection. To seek legislation to allow all counties to enact by resolution or at the option of the Board of Commissioners, by voter referendum, any or all revenue options from among those that have been authorized for any other county, including local option sales tax, prepared food taxes, impact fees, and real estate transfer taxes, and to preserve the existing local revenue base." So, that, in so many words, says that, that the counties, if it's done in one area, it should be done in all areas. So, all counties should be able to enact revenue-producing processes equally. And, and, and that the revenue base must be preserved. And, and I think it was a strong statement and I hope I represent it reasonably well, but I know that it was enthusiastically passed.
Did they give you a listing of those...
Yes.
...other counties?
Um...
They're asking to be able to do or to make available the revenue options from among those other counties. Do you have a listing of those revenue options?
I believe those, that information is available. I do not have it with me, but I think it's available.
The two main revenue sources that are available to other counties that aren't available to us, one would be impact fees. We did not institute impact fees before the deadline, so counties like Durham who did can enact them. I think Wake is in that group too. And then there are seven counties in the northeast that, that have the option to, to do the land transfer tax. Those were the two, those were the two main revenue sources that they discussed. And I can't remember all seven up there, but Camden, Pasquattan, and those folks up there can do that, Washington County.
I, I think the attitude, it was not one that, of combativeness. It was just one of standing tall and saying, "We, we appreciate what the state has, the burden they have on their shoulders. They must also respect the burden that we carry and that we must be good partners working through this, this valley together at this time." But I felt that it was a strong note and I, I don't know how that will be received on the Hill or in Raleigh, so to speak, but I know that there are people who are seasoned veterans in the commissioner corps who intend to take this to the, to the state capitol and, and have our day and have what we have to say. And when you think about it, we do, as a statewide association, represent all of the citizens of North Carolina. And through us, we talk about those bread and potato issues that are just very critical to us and that we must preserve our, our financial integrity at the expense of no one else. The other thing I wanted to mention, and very briefly, is that this week has been nothing short of historic. And I think it was just something to be a part of and to behold. And I think the implications for us all are indescrib, undescribably good if we can take advantage of the goodwill and the momentum that we saw. Those of you who saw the inauguration the other day, it was very, very inspiring. And I think we, it, it helped me to remind myself how fortunate and God blessed I am to be an American. And I hope we all feel that way and can do our part here in Lee County to move forward in the spirit that we witnessed both on Martin Luther King Day and also in Washington, D.C. What a week so far. And I thank you very much. We now need a motion to go into closed session.
It's been moved.
It's been moved that we go into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We go into closed session.